What up, what up, what up? This is your homeboy, Marla Pimp, AKA MTP. And welcome to another edition of the Pimp Hall TV Podcast. I got a very special guest here. This is her second time around on the show, so she must be special. I'm talking about... Yeah, this is the former City Council candidate for District Eight. This is, how else can I say, this is the number one protester. This is Ms. Don't Take No Shit. This is Ms. If Somebody Violates You and This Is A Racist Situation. You call her, she'll come to the plate and handle all that right on the spot. This is Ms. Controversy, Ms. Outspoken, something about Ms. Marie Mott. Welcome to Pimp Hall TV. How you doing?
Um, Marla, thank you for having me back once again. I appreciate it. It's an honor.
Right, man. Thank you for telling me that. Now, we talked about a year ago when I first started the podcast, but since then, you've had a lot of things that's transpired. You know, you've been, you know, you've been a real actor since then. So I wanted to bring you back and just talk about, you know, what's been going on with Marie since the last time I talked to you up until now, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, let's get into it. Start out first, you ran for City Council, District Eight, you know what I'm saying? Uh, now, uh, you didn't win, you didn't win the campaign, but you had an interesting campaign, very interesting campaign. So, uh, first and foremost, what made you decide to run for that?
Well, I had community members who asked me to run. They felt like the issues in the community were not being addressed. And we have a lot of issues, whether it's, um, black people being displaced out of Chattanooga who are from here, whether we're talking about rising rent and people, you know, not being able to afford it, just opportunity for people to be able to start black businesses. There's just a lot of issues. And so, uh, I was really encouraged by a lot of elders to just step out there because they trusted the work that I've been doing in the community. And so I was honored that people were asking me to run. And even I was frustrated as a young person because I'm born and raised in Chattanooga. And Chattanooga has so much potential to really be a, a, a problem. Like, we could be a musical city, an economical city, a city with great education. I mean, people come and spend a billion dollars here every year for outdoors. So there's just so much potential in Chattanooga. And I feel like we need leadership that is going to tap into like the hidden potential of people in the city. And so I just wanted to put my name in the ring. It wasn't about winning. It was really about just first of all, showing young people that even if you're from here, you can, you can do it. Uh, that running for public office is for you, even if you're in your twenties or thirties, that you can represent your community and be young. Uh, and that, you know, we deserve to have our name in the conversation. And so, uh, it was just me just stepping forward and really just want to continue to kick down doors that, A, black people, black young people, black women, we deserve to have a seat at the table.
Okay, okay. Now, uh, now you say some district, was that, was, was you and Anthony Byrd, were you, were you the only two, uh, candidates for District Eight?
We had three. So I was running against Anthony Byrd and, uh, we were running against a UTC student.
A UTC student ran for, uh...
Yes.
I mean, no hating, but oh damn, I didn't, okay, an active student?
Yes, so he's, uh, he's finishing his last, uh, year at UTC. So he, he ran for school board in 2018 and then he threw his hat in the ring. Deandre Anderson ran against the both of us.
Okay, okay, okay. So, uh, how can I say this? Uh, now you had, you had, uh, you were very outspoken in your campaign, very outspoken in your campaign. Uh, now, do you think, uh, it was harder for you to get in because you was running against somebody who was trying to be reelected versus two people coming out the gate running? Do you think that played a role into it?
I mean, I think Anthony Byrd partly because, you know, he's a party promoter. That's, that was like his, his main, uh, business in the city for a long period of time. Besides working at the courthouse, his name has been out there in the community a lot longer than mine. And so, of course, you know, that, that plays a role. But, I mean, we were, we all have to think about, it was a three-way race. So the votes were split three different ways. And he, Byrd didn't really win by that much. So, um, you know, part of it, I think, was his name recognition as opposed to mine, just because people have known him a lot longer. But I think the other portion of it was the simple fact that, um, last year, because of my involvement in the protest, though I, I, I've been dragged pretty publicly in the paper because of my stance on the police. And so, I mean, it's okay. It's okay. But I think it's, part of it was just, you know, some of the, the blowback from, you know, us standing against the police and then, you know, just Byrd having been involved in the community uh, from a party perspective a lot longer than I have.
And picking back off what you said, uh, like the stance against the police, I mean, that's, if, that's a good thing because that's you standing for what you believe in. And, uh, and, you know, we, we got all respect there. And listen, I told you this last time I talked, I don't know if you remember this, you feel me? This is my exact words, from, as from the community, we're rooting for you. We need somebody like Marie Mott in there. But on the other side, you so outspoken, and if I'm them, I'm not talking about me. If I'm them, you're so outspoken, you're so no bullshit. We don't need nobody like her in our mix, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know, because she's going to call out bullshit. You know, and she, and she comes in and says, hey, y'all have forty million dollars, still spending it on the square in my river park. How about uplifting the west side of East Lake, blah, blah, blah? If they can't give you a legitimate excuse about why they're not going to do that, you're going to put them on blast. And start to turn your head and act like you don't see what they're doing. So, you know, we don't need nobody like you because you're not going to play ball. You know what I'm saying? And which is a good thing for us, but you scare those people, Marie. So you, you really scare those people, which is a good thing. I mean, keep doing that shit. But if I'm only, if I'm the white person on the other side of the fence, I'm scared when I see her come because she's no nonsense. And I, especially if I know in my heart, we're full of bullshit. At certain times, she's going to see that shit. If we let her in, she's going to pinpoint that. You know what I'm saying?
Exactly. And, you know, if, if you're from Chattanooga, have been in Chattanooga a long time, we've been knowing that, you know, there, the elite on the mountain and very privileged people run this city. And so, uh, I'm not for sale, you know? And that's why I haven't been discouraged about losing because I felt like I ran with integrity. I stood on the issues that were important to me, which were all about the community. And, you know, I had a wonderful campaign. I wouldn't trade anything that I've done in the last year. I wouldn't change it.
Right, 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 right. Uh, let me ask you this. If you had, had gotten office and won, what would be the first time that you addressed and fixed? That was what we would, what was going to be the first time? Like, I get an office on Monday, soon as I'm getting on this right here, what was it going to be?
The first thing that we would have to have a conversation about would be the rising rent. So people not being able to afford, uh, the ability to be able to live in Chattanooga. And so, uh, that conversation would be around, how do we make some housing available? And at the same time, affordable to people who are from here. And it really needs to be like low to moderate income housing. And I'm, even though it's not in my district, I'm highly concerned about what's getting ready to happen to the west side community when it comes to, uh, development. And so I'm, I'm very, very concerned about, you know, are black people going to be able to continue to, to live in the city of Chattanooga? That's, that's at the top of my concerns.
Now, speaking on the west side, like, of course, at one minute, from what I'm hearing, you know, of course, I know that it's going to tear it down. But then now recently, a lot of my homeboys are telling me that they're not going to tear it down. They're going to just come out there and redo the projects and upgrades and something like that. But that don't make sense to me to for them to come and upgrade some projects. You know what I'm saying? Like, before I upgraded projects, I think they would tear it down and make them into condos and shit like that. So I hadn't seen, I think this is what my homeboys are telling me. They're not going to tear it down, no, Marla, they're going to come out here and look, look what they're doing to the grass. They putting some new grass down, if they're going and, and do this and that to each project and each house and all that, they're going to upgrade the motherfucker. They're not going to tear it down. But I hadn't seen any writing on the news. They're just, I'm hearing in the streets. I don't know how true that is. You understand what I'm saying?
So the question I would ask the community is, where is the example of that? What happened to Boone Heights? What happened to Pass Homes? I mean, if they were going to revitalize and renew the projects in Chattanooga, Pass Homes would still be on the south side and Boone Heights would still be in east Chattanooga.
Right, 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 right. So I don't know where they get this information from. They just always told me. And I still, I still be out there when I'm in town. I still hang out there. That's what was just told me. I've never seen it myself, so I don't know how to take that, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, Marie, let's talk about the, is the situation you had with the running with the police. You and Mr. C. Grimey. Walk us through that day about what happened and walk us through that. How, give us, give us, give us the layout behind it went down right there.
So the flag?
Uh huh. The thing that landed, your controversial and, uh, mugshot with the face you made. How, how, how did, what happened that day?
So, uh, we actually had some of the longest standing protests behind George Floyd, Breonna Taylor in the nation. Uh, so at this point, we had been protesting for over thirty days. And then we had Reginald Arrington Jr. get beaten by five sheriff deputies right here in Hamilton County. So imagine, you know, you watched the video thirty days before of George Floyd being killed for eight minutes plus straight.
Right.
And then, you know, while you're protesting about something that didn't even happen in Chattanooga, you have a video that's released of something that did happen here at the hands of the police. And so, you know, we were pissed off.
Right.
Because how many times, uh, you know, are we going to see this? Like, at home, across the country? And so, like, part of our route, when we would protest, we would go downtown past the jail. And that was important because we always wanted the, the men and the women who were locked in downtown to hear us on the outside saying freedom, to let them know, like, we were standing on the issues that impact them and we wanted them to be returned to the community. And so, um, that flag was just, it was a hot, humid day. Like, we were drenched in sweat. And I remember just seeing that fucking flag flying, the sheriff's flag. And before I knew it, uh, you know, it was down and then it ended up...
It was down?
It was down and then we ended up, uh, back at Miller Park. So we made like a loop on our route. We ended up back at Miller Park and, uh, you know, somebody brought the flag. And I was like, what the hell are we getting ready to do with this? And, and then I was like, oh, well, we got some gasoline.
Yeah, and then gasoline, the gasoline incident took place in Miller Park?
In, in Miller Park. And so I felt like if police officers could send us a message that our lives aren't worth anything and continue to beat us and kill us on camera, that I could burn their flag and say, fuck you. And what you are standing for, which is the brutalization and the murder of my people's lives. And so, you know, I, I didn't run from the fact that I did it. I didn't apologize for it, as a matter of fact, to protect my people. And the folks that I protested with, the very next day, I put up a video letting them know that I did it. So I wanted...
That's how they traced it back to you?
Uh, oh, ye- yes, indeed. So I, I, I wanted them to understand that everybody's not scared of you. Everybody's not afraid of your institution. Everybody is not going to whisper about what you're doing. That some of us are very passionate about seeing justice and equality for our community that we'll send a message to you so you can understand. And I mean, considering last year, if you remember, the protesters in Minneapolis burned the police station to the ground?
I do remember that. Yes, I do.
I think a flag is very small considering that we had witnessed five officers beat a black man nearly to death. A flag is very, very small as far as what we could have done, you know, being completely outraged by what had happened.
Okay, so, uh, I want to get the details. So, okay, you posted a video burning the flag. Now, so what happens next? Uh, you get a call saying we have one for your arrest? Or you, or you just out chilling, they kind of picked you up? How, how did that go from that to the arrest to jail?
So actually, one, actually, one of my community members hit me up and said, uh, Marie, I, I was out and about and I was chatting with one of the police officers and they said that they put out some warrants for your arrest and you're going to be getting contacted soon. And it, it wasn't too long after that Glenn Scruggs reached out to me and said I needed to turn myself, needed to turn myself in. And so, uh, you know, me and Grimey and a few others of us ended up turning ourselves in. And so we went in, you know, we weren't going to be nice. And so that's where the picture came from. I, I even wanted it to be known in my mugshot, like...
That was real, that was a real interesting mugshot. Very. That was a top ten mugshot right there, trust me.
I figured, well, hell, I'm, I'm in, I'm going to jail. So I might as well let them know that I'm resisting all the way. So, yeah, we didn't get, we didn't per se get arrested. We, we turned ourselves in, yeah.
What was, so what was the charge, destruction of property? What was the charge?
Well, uh, originally, it was just going to be us blocking the road and then allegedly blocking a EMS vehicle. And then me and Grimey got charged with, uh, charges from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, which was vandalism, um, theft of property, inciting a riot and reckless burning. And so we just had the reckless burning, or no, the, we just had the, uh, inciting a riot and theft charges dropped. And so we still have four charges that remain.
As of right now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, shit, I thought, I thought it was all over and done with.
No, we got, uh...
I have a question to go back there. I thought it was over, I thought it was, my bad, I'm sorry, I thought it was done. That's why I even brought it up. I thought it was done.
Nope, it is not done. So we had, we had two of our six charges dropped, which the inciting the riot and the theft charges were the heaviest ones that we have. But, uh, the other ones got bound over and so we're, we're taking it to trial.
So that's how you post, I saw you make a post saying the charges were dropped. I thought it was, I want to ask you about open case. I didn't, I didn't know that. I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
They've, they've dropped two of the charges and the theft was one of them. So, uh, it's all good.
So what, what charges were bound over then?
So we still have the reckless burning and vandalism charge from the sheriff's department. And then on the city side, blocking the roadway and blocking an EMS vehicle.
That's crazy. Hey, you know they managed to have it bounded over, right? Because it's going to cost so much money for them to crank up grand jury for a trial. You crank up jurors for murders and shit, you know what I'm saying? For some mispick, they want y'all to cop out to some bullshit probation you can have on your record. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And they, they just want to send a message that, you know, we don't want people speaking out about what's happening in Chattanooga.
Right, 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 right. I hope y'all fight that to the end. They, they even come to shit like three weeks probation. No, no, two weeks, no, nothing, nothing. I'm going all the way to the end. I'm not accepting shit. So y'all, y'all going to spend this money since y'all, since y'all don't want to dismiss it, y'all going to spend this money. I'm not taking sixty days probation, not an hour probation, none of that, none. So, so that's my, my stick, don't, don't, no matter how sweet the deal sounds, don't do it. Don't do it. Don't do it.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, make them pay for it. So, uh, was that the reason that y'all stopped protesting? Or y'all feel like, because I was going to ask you, just period, like, why did the protest stop? These flag, y'all had pretty much clear the purpose or did it become too much of a headache with the people, with the police? Did this charge make y'all stop? Because y'all was going hard for a minute, then it kind of just, you know, kind of died out. You know what I'm saying?
Well, uh, uh, as KRS would say, woo, woo, that's the sound of the police. You know, people against the police till they see them blue lights, you know? And, um, until they see you might actually have to get arrested for what you're speaking up about. And so...
That's part of it.
Yeah, so naturally, because we're in a very comfortable generation as opposed to people who were standing up during the civil rights era, there's a lot of people who stopped coming after we got arrested. And the, part of that was a scare tactic because it's not like they just had, you know, they came after me and C. Grimey. They came after some other people who were just folks who protested with us. So there were a lot of people who stopped coming. But, I mean, we actually kept protesting up until about September. Our last, um, our last protest was a, a critical mass bike ride that we had throughout downtown. And we started that, uh, on Main Street. We went downtown all on bikes. And we probably had like a hundred people on bikes doing that.
Bikes or motorcycles?
Bikes, like, asphalt bicycles.
Okay, okay, okay. I missed it. All right, all right. Now, uh, I see you here recently, you've been booked for a few speaking engagements out of town, as a matter of fact. So, uh, I want you to speak on that. What do you, I mean, how did that come about for one? And then two, you know, what's behind it? What are you going, what, what are you going with this right here? Where you going, where you going with this?
So, um, part of what people have invited me to have conversations about has been around race, around equity, around the Black Lives Matter movement. Uh, and some of it has just been pure motivational. So, uh, what does it take to have courage? What does it take to be able to be unapologetic about the things that matter to you? And so I've had an opportunity to speak several times at McCauley, uh, several of the public schools, at UTC, uh, TSU. And so I've just...
I saw, I saw CSU, I saw the...
CSU. Um, I spoke with students at, um, Brown and Princeton University. So I've had an opportunity to even speak with students at some of our most prestigious universities across the nation. So, um, and part of it has just been because, uh, the impact that Chattanooga had on the protest, some of our protest footage ended up in HBO. Some of our protest footage ended up on...
You gotta tell us this. I didn't know all this shit. I didn't know this. Okay, okay.
Yeah, so some of our protest footage ended up on HBO. Some of it was on NPR. Uh, some of it was featured on NASA. And so by the time we got to January, me and C. Grimey's work and some of the work from other, other activists in the city have been featured all, all across the globe. You know, so Chattanooga, we, we had, we have never had this massive of a movement in Chattanooga since the Howard six, sit-ins in the sixties, when Howard students sat downtown at Woolsworth. We've never had anything of this magnitude. And so the fact that we came out, number two, um, part of the footage that was on HBO, because we protested a lot across the bridge, they actually had a clip of us marching across the Wildness Street Bridge. And they had a clip of like John Lewis and Dr. King Martin, uh, marching across the Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma, Alabama. And so that, it's like they had a past march and then they, they clipped the Chattanooga and had our march. And so that, to us, that was like an honor that we were considered, that what, that what we were doing was just as significant as the ones before us. And so we were extremely proud of the fact that, you know, we got to put Chattanooga on the stage for something positive and something, you know, that had to do with progress and change and not some bullshit.
What, now, was it on an HBO special or a TV show? What was it on? What was it on?
Uh, so it was on a HBO special, Between the World and Me. So, you know, that's a, a book by...
Between the World and Me, Between the World and Me. All right, and that's what we can see, Marie Mott leading the protests in Chattanooga on HBO, Between the World and Me.
Between the World and Me.
Between the World and Me, see, I remember that, Between the World and Me. Now, let me ask you, I'm going to go back to the speaking engagement. So, uh, so just say, how did the first one come, the first out of town come about? Just one day, you got an email or you got a phone call saying, hey, we know who you are, want to get you here. How, how did that come about?
The, the first one was, uh, with students at Princeton. And that was because one of them was from Chattanooga and wasn't, uh, was doing online classes and was here. And so she was a part of the protest and was, um, impacted by some of the things that I talked about in the protest and invited me into, uh, a class conversation. So a good half of the speaking engagements I have received have been from college students who have participated in the protest.
Same way with CSU?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool, cool. Now, I got another question I want to ask you. This might be the last question, unless you, unless you, unless, depending on what you say. About this right here. I've been seeing you online talk about legalizing marijuana and how simple it seems to be for it to get done. So, uh, I want you to speak on that because I hear, I hear, if I remember right, you were saying something about legalizing marijuana. I don't want to say the first name, but Snider's was saying some other kind of thing. You were saying it's not, it's not even that hard. All you have to do is do this, 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 and this. If I remember right, somebody was saying it's legalized in Nashville or some, or some other city. And, but whatever, whatever the thing was, somebody was making an excuse about why it can't be done in Chattanooga. And you was basically combating that, saying, yes, it can. All you have to do is this, 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 this. So speak on the process of legalizing marijuana. Why you think it had been done here if it was, if it's that simple?
So, uh, that was while I was running for city council. Uh, and I was accused by Demetrius Coonrod of just trying to get votes. And so, uh, I ended up having to do a livestream to explain to people that, um, first of all, Nashville decriminalized marijuana.
Okay.
And so the way they did that first was, um, taking the priority from the police department and making simple possession a, an offense that they didn't want to arrest people for. So making it a low priority arrest. And that if you just wanted to...
Oh, oh, hold a pause. I want to make sure I get all this clear for my weed heads out there. So what they do is they tell the police, if somebody get caught with X amount of marijuana under a certain amount of weight or a certain amount of grams, let them go, basically?
Either let them go, so the discretion is of the police officer, but either let them go or at the most, write them a citation.
Or don't take them with you.
So no arrest.
Okay.
No arrest of a certain...
Right now in Nashville, right now?
So Nashville, they started that process in 2016. The, the district attorney last year took it a step further that his office was not even going to prosecute, even if they did arrest somebody. They weren't even going to prosecute the charge.
So what's the, what's the amount you can have that you can't be prosecuted for? What, is it less than an ounce or something like that?
It's half of that, half an ounce. So for Nashville, they decriminalize half of an ounce. And most people don't have that much weed on their...
No, not if you smoke. No, you won't. Okay. You get called, so I get pulled over in Nashville right now by the police. I get caught with half an ounce or less, I walk.
Pretty much. That is correct.
Now, what if you're smoking?
So if, as far as what I understand, any arrest that has to do with anything that's under half of an ounce, with the exception of if you get caught with marijuana and a gun. Or you get caught with marijuana that's for resale.
Right, right, right.
Right? So if you have like a scale, do make, where it's obvious that you're not just enjoying it, right? It's a lucrative business for you. That doesn't qualify. But if you just have a joint or, you know, maybe you just have a dime bag, even if it's rolled up, that's not an arrestable offense. And you're not going to get prosecuted for that.
Okay, now, why is that not going on down here? Who, who, who can make that happen? But it, but who can make that happen? But it's not going through with the, whatever the protocol is to make that happen? Is that the mayor, is that the chief police? Who, who's that following?
So first, it needs to be written into law, which would be a byproduct of the city council. City council would have to have five votes that they would basically write into a public policy of law that simple possession of marijuana is a low priority offense. And then what can happen from there is that the mayor and the city council can work with the district attorney to be able to take it a step further like they did in Nashville and say, well, maybe we're going to do like Nashville, half of an ounce or less. We're, our office is not even going to prosecute for it. But the city needs to start with it first. And that starts our city council.
City council is the one that comes up with this proposition first and they have to go to the mayor?
Correct. So the mayor is not the one that is going to write this in the law. It needs to, it has to be voted on by the city council. Now, I have talked to Tim Kelly's office about it and they're 100% behind it. We just have to have five council persons who want to stop locking people up for weed.
Well, with a song, Byrd and Coonrod would be the first two, so we need three more.
One would assume, well, we, we will hope. And we have four black people that are sitting up there on the city campus. So it makes no sense why we should not be able to get this passed if we have Coonrod, Byrd, Rakita Dotley in the south side and the west side, and then Isaiah Hester in east Chattanooga. That's four black people. We don't need one more person to say that.
Hey, you know what? Uh, all right, let me say this. We can speak on the marijuana topic. I want to talk, I want to blend politics in with this. Like, all right, like, with that, with that being said, what you just said, right? All right, uh, to me, like, my, my, my cousin was telling me one time, man, you need to run for council. I'm not, I'm not with, I'm too, I feel like I'm too much of a real nigga to do that. They're not going to fuck with me. You know what I'm saying? Because I, I'll be too bad a book, you know? So, but you need to do, you're the voice of the people and plus you're a rapper. You got a fan base, people vote for you. But you need to do, you the voice of the people, and plus you're a rapper, you got a fan base, people vote for you, I'm, 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 I don't wanna do that, dog. Man, we went back and forth for thirty minutes about this shit, I don't wanna do this shit. I'm saying to say this, to go along with what we're talking about now, like, if, if, if it's, here go my, my logical thinking sometime, I be thinking. If politics is simple as we on the outside think it is, meaning like I'm not a politician, I'm, I'm, I'm an outsider looking in, who don't know that shit. So on the outside looking in, it's like, okay, they'll do this, 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 and this, but if it was that simple, I would think it would be done. So I look at like, okay, we think they should do this, but say if we got in the office ourselves, then we'd be like, oh, okay, I see, I come, it can't happen that quick. I don't know all these other shit, these other rules come in with it. And I'm saying, I had to say this, if it's that simple to say we can have five people sign off and it's done, okay, I'm finna come in with a proposition right now in the morning. I know three or four y'all personally, sign, 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 now let's get a field person, now let's take this, so what's today, Wednesday? I'm gonna come in with this Thursday morning, I need all y'all, I need four people, I'm, I'm one, I need four people sign. Here go five people sign on the, on the, on this little proposition to leave, decriminalize marijuana, here go five citizens, I'm one. Maria's two, my girl Bo Bo's three, my girl, this, you know what I'm saying, five people that I know sign off for now, Thursday, I'm finna take this. Thursday evening to, to the mayor's office, say we just signed this, now I'm finna press you to do whatever needs to be done. And then on next week, Monday, Tuesday, I'm asking, is it done now, okay, is it done, you got it, okay, cool, now from here, let's go to other steps. So basically, by July, I have marijuana decriminalized, if it was me, but I'm not a politician, I'm thinking like. Me on my, this nigger shit, this shit, this shit is simple, that's all I need, oh, let's go do this tomorrow, but it's not getting done. So are people bullshitting or it's just not as easy as we think it is, which one is it?
People are bullshitting. I, I understand what you're asking me, so Chattanooga is up under the same type of. Governmental or municipal privilege as Nashville, and I'll explain. So Chattanooga is a home rule city, meaning that we have a right. Our city council, our mayor have a right to write our laws as we see fit. Without outside interference. And so anything that they want to do, the only thing that is required is the attitude and the will to get it done. It's just as simple as that, and so part of why this has not happened is, I believe, number one. We don't have representatives that understand that simple possession is actually the top five arrests for the African American community. And that the state of Tennessee has some of the most stringent laws for simple possession. Where simple possession charge in Tennessee is eleven twenty nine. So even just having a few grams a week can put you and lock you up for a year, that means you lose your housing, you lose your job. You lose time away from your family, you lose the ability to be there and support your children. And so when we think about how we want to improve the community, the start of that should be, how do we keep people out of prison? How do we keep people keeping food on the table for their family? And how do we keep the police from harassing people over stuff that doesn't matter? Our politicians need to spend more time on figuring out why people are getting shot every day in the city as opposed to who got a few grams a week. Like to me, um, I talked to the district attorney in Nashville. And he was perplexed that Chattanooga wasn't taking the steps to do it because of how easy it is to do it. It just takes people who want to get the work done, Maul, that's all.
That's, 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 that's the one thing I don't get, like, and again, I'm not cut out for that lifestyle, I guess, I don't get like, some shit is just. With me not knowing the, the politics, some shit is just like, it's like it's a no brainer, you know what I'm saying, like, uh, like. If, if it's really this simple, shit, we can do this, we can get this started tomorrow. And then get the bar rolling by next week with other shit, then by next month, we good to go, like, and then I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't get it, you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I just don't, I don't, I don't get it, man, I don't.
I, I, the petition that I started for public support, I had over twenty-five hundred people sign off on the petition. That's not small. That's more people than the, all, all of the votes for District Eight. That's almost all of the votes for District Eight and District Nine in this last election. So I had more people that came out to support decriminalizing marijuana than voted in my district. So this is an issue that's not just important to me, it's important to the community. And so if it's important to the community, it needs to get done, simple as that.
Let me ask you this, but, okay, so when you get a petition signed. You just basically saying these are people who are in agreeance with what I'm presenting to you, but does the posi- does the petition hold weight?
Absolutely, that is, so, uh, that's one of the things I learned going down to the city council. Was that if people had an issue that was important to them, the council members would always want to know. Well, how many people side with you on this issue? Cause if it's just you, they don't care, right? And so if I come up with a document, that's how I got a meeting with the mayor. I sent the mayor's team, that I had, at the time, I had about twenty-one hundred people that had signed on to it. And that was enough to give me a meeting with the mayor, because that's not a small number of individuals. And I had people from the business community, like, uh, Hemp House and various different other businesses that also supported it. So it, it was even beyond the community, I have business support from, from the community, you know what I'm saying? And so it's, it's hard for you to say no, when you have a lot of people who are getting behind something. And so a petition holds a lot of weight, the more, the more people that stand with you on the issue, the harder it is for that issue to be ignored.
Okay, nice, over two thousand people signed this petition. That still can never override the five council votes you need, this is right, this, this is really just pressure to put on the council people, right? Like, look, 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 hurry up and do it, and they can follow through or they can ignore it, right?
Absolutely, and the reason why we have to have the city council votes is because they have to write it as a law. So the police, you know what I'm saying, so they can hold the police accountable about how they are arresting and interacting with people in the community. And so that's why you have to go before the council, so if they all vote yes, then what they're gonna do is work with the city attorney to write it as a law. And then now they're gonna have a conversation with the police department, and then the mayor's gonna have a conversation with the police department. We have made simple possession a low priority offense, meaning we want you to stop arresting people for this bullshit. Well, this is what we want you to focus on, violent crime, like people getting raped, people getting beaten, people getting shot. That's much more important than people rolling around the city with a joint and, and a blunt.
I get, I get, I get, so do you think it's gonna happen?
I think that if it doesn't happen, uh, our elected officials would be making a very grave mistake. And it's kinda hard for them to say no when the mayor supports it, you know what I mean? Like, do you really wanna, do you really wanna go against the people and the mayor?
Oh, it's no way, it's no way, uh, I ain't even cut, I'm sorry, but I don't say, I don't know, I'm just asking, cause I, I really, this shit I really don't know. So it's no way for the, the mayor to override them like, basically, okay, y'all bullshitting, I'm tired of waiting, y'all, I'm just gonna do it myself, I'm just gonna sign off on it myself. There's no way, there's no way that can happen, do we ha- do we have to wait on them in order, you know, how does that go? Cause I'm assuming he's the more powerful person, of course.
I mean, so I think the, the thing that is important is how do we get in, get it written into law? And so of course, he could technically write it as an executive order. But it's gonna have more weight as an actual law, does it make sense?
Yeah, it do, it, it makes sense, it makes sense. But I guess, couldn't, can the executive order be looked at like it's the big joke, meaning like, okay, we wanna do it this, this way. The chronological order, council, and then y'all turn over to the mayor, blah, 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 but if y'all keep dragging y'all feet. The big joke will go for you, it's okay, Mary, just write it yourself, just write it in, cause we seen that it's not always gonna really get done. Is that a, is that a option?
It can be, but the way that the mayor wants to go about it is, and I kinda understand why. It's because the city council really is the first line of defense for the community. That, that first group of people within government that's supposed to support the people. And so I think the mayor has a lot of priorities of his own, such as the COVID nineteen and various other things. There's got to be something that the city council takes up, even if it's just one issue, that is going to support the people. And so I appreciate him putting it at the feet of the council persons, because all of them ran. And said that they wanted to make progress, and so here's your opportunity, let's just start with something small. Decriminalizing marijuana is very small, that's like, that's not anything very big. I mean, this has already been introduced at the state level, uh, when I put this out there on my campaign. A week later, um, London Lamar put this on the house floor at the state. And wanted to decriminalize a whole ounce, which is what I, what, which is what I supported. And so Chattanooga has to catch up, I mean, we follow behind Nashville with everything else. Why not follow it through with some of the good that they're doing, instead of just development? And so it, it just makes sense, I mean, we have, right around the corner from city council is U T C. I mean, college students smoke and, I, I, I mean, it's, it's just too many benefits for it, you know what I mean?
They could be wrong, yeah, they could be wrong, yeah. I agree, Marie, I hate to pick your brain, cause like I said, a lot of this shit, I don't know, I'm trying to ask questions that street dudes wanna know. Or dudes who, who in my element wanna know, who are not in that world, but still have questions about that world, you know what I'm saying? So I'm asking, I'm asking from that perspective right there, you feel me, uh, so. And I wanna say this before we get out of here too, uh, then this man on the outside looking in, I be feeling like, I'm just talking, I'm not talking about like specifically. Our council people in general, I'm not taking shots, I'm just saying, I'm saying overall, it seem like when black people get voted in the office. I just gotta be blunt about it, when we get voted in the office, we don't come in bucking the system like we should. You was bucking the system, that's why, that's why you didn't get in, you know what I'm saying, you was bucking, but we, we like that, but I feel like we didn't, we don't come in just. I feel like we come in playing ball, what is presidential, you know, chief police, mayor, you know, city council, I mean, I'm talking from every perspective, not just one, not just one genre. I feel like we come in playing balls instead of coming in just doing what people from the community wanna see us do. Doing, doing what they expect us to do when they voted for us, you know what I'm saying, like, I don't feel like we come in and, and do that. You get what I'm saying, like, uh, do, do that make sense, do that make sense?
That makes perfect sense, and I would say one of the things that would help with that is. It's bigger than just getting somebody black in, sometimes we, we look at it for face value. And so, um, you know, there's the saying, all, uh, skin folk ain't can folk. You know, everybody is not for the black community really making progress, there are some people who want to get in because. They wanna benefit, I mean, being a council person, you can cash in on your, on, on your position. And so that's why it's important for us as those in the community to start engaging a little bit with politics. So we know, you know, what should we be looking for when we elect people? And that if we really want to benefit, we've gotta elect some people who are gonna go in and actually advocate for us.
Right, right, right.
And, and the things that matter to us.
Yeah, cause we don't, we don't, we don't get that, man, like, and, and we, uh, that's, and that's why I was saying to myself, like, I wanna watch people get through the door. And get in here, and they, and I wonder if they say to themselves, like, damn, okay, I didn't know all this was going on, man. I don't, and I don't, I don't know how to go out and explain this to the people that voted to be in here, you know what I'm saying, but now that I got in, I see this other world right here. It's like, shit, okay, I thought I was gonna come in and do this, but it's not that easy, is that the issue, you know what I'm saying, like?
That could, that could be part of the issue, but I would say that's also in us as the black community. Um, it makes no sense to have four black people that are going to get into city council. And they don't have a shared vision of what they're gonna fight for together. Part of the problem is everybody's got their own little thing, you got this person over here doing this, that person over there doing that. And I, I just, I gotta be blunt too, all white people don't move like that, they're going to play ball with one another.
Right, right.
We've got to learn how to play ball with one another and to run, run the game as a team. And if you don't play as a team, you're not gonna win, and that's exactly what politics is, it's a team sport.
Now, you know what, you right about that, uh, like I'm gonna say, I'm gonna do like the presidential comparison, right? Alright, now like when Obama ran or whatever, right, first black, like you saying the face value thing, first black man, so no matter, no matter, we finna get this nigga in here. We just got to, then we'll see what happens out there, we gotta get him in here, we have to do that on the end of the evening, he look like he's the one, he has the charisma and the style, we gotta get him in here. You know what I'm saying, then whatever come out there, whatever, let's get, let's get him here. So the votes came out of numbers and we as a people got him in. Now, I don't have an opinion of whether he did good or bad, but some people might not feel he can live up to the dream, you follow what I'm saying? Uh, live up to what they was expecting out of you, you the first one in here of us, man, you gotta go in there and do this, 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 fuck what they think, go in there and do you. And I guess probably just being smart, he probably, it sounded like he played ball a little bit, you know what I'm saying? He won the first term, so we think, okay, on the second term, I know he's finna come in that motherfucker like, fuck, this is my last term anyway, fuck it, you know what I'm saying? But he still kinda played ball, he, but he still comes across as a respectful individual, so it's hard to hate him. You know what I'm saying, but some people sit back and think, damn, man, what do we really get out of that? That's how some people think, what do we really get out of that? I'm on whatever side of the fence, I'm just happy he was in there, but I'm, I'm here both sides, what do we, what do we really get out of that? Now, fast forward, when he's out of the way, Trump came in bucking, I don't like that dude, but I respect what he was doing. I don't like him at all, but he came in, basically, black folks, Mexicans, uh, fuck all y'all, y'all said it, you know what I'm saying? Oh, you got a problem with that, police, kill him, uh, and when you kill him, I wanna go publicly and speak against that, you know what I'm saying? I can't congratulate you, but I wanna speak against it, all my other racist people out there, my, uh, proud boys, stand back and stand by, stand back, I need you to kill some more of these niggas. We keep talking shit, just stand by, Mexicans, y'all don't like him either, okay, I'm finna send the U S troops and the government to all the, to all the properties in the United States. Anybody who don't have a green card, send them back to Mexico, and as a matter of fact, make sure they stay there, build that wall. I'm finna spend taxpayers' dollars, even the motherfuckers that didn't vote for me, I'm finna spend y'all taxpayers' dollars to build, to build that wall to keep these Mexicans out here. Y'all don't like what I did, oh, well, fuck it, this is what I wanna do. Now, we don't like that shit, but if I'm one of the white boys voting for him, motherfucker, right, oh, man, you in there doing your thing. I want Obama to come in doing shit like that, like fuck with everybody, like Trump got a bunch of people that hate him, but the people that voted him in, they love what he's doing. But us who are, who are, who are not for that shit, we hate this motherfucker, like, man, who, but I want Obama to come in doing that shit. So us, if voters win, we gonna be loving it, man, do it, fuck what they think, the people don't like you, oh, well, Trump don't give a fuck about nobody not liking him. At the end of the day, I don't like it, but he was who he was, and I respect the fact he put on, he didn't put on a front, he didn't play ball. That's why he got so many supporters, he didn't play ball, he didn't try to be politically correct, he did what he wanted to do, and did what his voters wanted him to do. Our people don't come in doing that shit.
Because we want to be liked more than we want to be respected, you know, I, I've had some people who don't agree with anything that I say. But respect the fact that I can step out there unapologetically, and I'm not gonna back down on what I believe in. And so I ran from the perspective of, I don't care if you like what I'm talking about. I don't care if you vote for me. None of that matters, I'm still gonna speak my piece about what I believe in. And what we need is representatives who are willing, because if you look at the exit polls from twenty twenty. Trump got more votes than he did his first term, the only reason he didn't win was because of the. The typical thing that helps Democrats get in, Democrats get a little bit of votes from the, the Latin people, a little bit from the Asians, a little bit from black folks. Black people really pulled through for the Democrats to be able to, to have the presidency. But Trump had more votes, as a matter of fact, there was an increase in the amount of Latino people, Asian people. And black people who voted for Donald Trump the second time around, and he's gonna qualify for twenty twenty-four. And so, I mean, he's been so outspoken to the point, as hard as Democrats came after him, they couldn't get him arrested. And I, I have to agree with you, Maul, I don't like ninety percent of the things that he stood for. He's done some, some good things for the African American community around H B C Us, but to me, that's about it, but I mean.
Play ball, he played ball a little bit, play ball a little bit.
But I mean, wh- when we need somebody like slapping China's hand, he did that. And he was unapologetic about that, talking about jobs being created in the United States, I agree with that, we need more jobs right here at home. You know, there's some things that he stood for that even I found myself supporting. And so I appreciate the fact that he didn't wanna be a politician, he was just being a person, and if you with it, cool, if you not, fuck you. It was just that simple.
That's it, I, I don't, I don't like it, Marie, but that, I respect that shit, like, yeah, like, I'm not, I'm not politically correct, I'm not gonna get on here and say it the professional way. I'm gonna say it the way it roll off my fucking tongue, if you don't like it, oh, well, the ones that voted for me, y'all fucking with it, you know what I'm saying? And it's just that simple, it's just that simple, and, and you couldn't help but respect that, he crazy, entertaining. But he was unfilled, so that he wasn't playing for the camera, he was him, and I can see how people can adapt to that. I wanna see some of our people come in acting like that, acting just like that, this is what it is, the people that voted for me, this is what I'm finna do, I'm doing it for y'all. All the people that didn't vote for me, oh, well, deal with it, deal with it forever longer, I'm, I'm in term, but just deal with it. And I'm gonna keep saying what I wanna say, I'm gonna keep saying the way I wanna say, I'm not gonna be corrected about it, I don't care what feelings I hurt, I'm finna ride my term out just like. And I'm gonna keep saying what I wanna say. I'm gonna keep saying what I wanna say. I'm not gonna be corrected about it. I don't care what feelings I hurt. I'm finna ride my term out just like this. Our people don't come in doing that shit, man. You would've came in doing that. That's why you didn't get in. You know what I'm saying? That's why you didn't get in. It wasn't about the votes. If you were, if you the one behind James Landstar with votes, some kinda way, something else would have. You know what I'm saying? Something else would happen. You wanna, you wanna, something else would happen, Marie. But it, but it, but it's good because we like you. You still stand for us. So it's like, you don't come across as the sellout type. You know what I'm saying? So we still cool with that. But you guys know who just, who own that, who own that. Get it how we live type thing. We don't get in doing that. And it's, I, I just wanna see that happen one time. Was it president? Was it chief police? What is, uh, mayor? I just wanna see one person do that. Just one person. You know what I'm saying? Just one person. So that's my thing. If anything, uh, Marie wanna add before we get out of here?
No, Maul, I just thank you for having me on again. I appreciate the work that you are doing. If you have not picked up Off Comes the Mask. Stop sleeping on my, stop sleeping on my bro and tap in. If you have not picked up the thirty-two documentary, stop sleeping on my. Man, the catalog is ever-growing, family. So tap in with Pimpaholic. Maul, keep doing what you're doing. I'm so proud of you. And just appreciative of you giving me a piece of your platform today.
And give me, uh, Facebook, social media information so they can follow you, please.
Absolutely. You can type me in, Marie Mott, M A R I E M O T T. You can find me at. Four two three Marie on all social media platforms. Or you can, uh, reach out to me on my website, four two three marie dot com.
Alright, Marie Mott. Thank you so much. And again, y'all go that like, hit that like, subscribe button, subscribe Pimpaholic, be on YouTube. Much love. Thank you. We outta here.